The Senate has now entered the day two of the public hearing of a tax reform bills, or bill which brings together key stakeholders from the economic and financial sectors. We'll go straight to the FCC now to join in on the conversation.
... to expediting a separate customs unit to look after specific customs areas. And of course, we have a number of examples in Africa that we have given in the paper. I'll mention Tanzania, I'll mention Uganda, I'll mention South Africa, I'll mention Ghana. The experience in all of these places is that, just like this new tax bill is trying to propose, there was an observable increase in the tax-to-GDP ratio in the first few years of implementation. So these sudden spikes that we saw were not sustained in all of these places where they have happened. The data are there in the paper and we would be able to... But on the flip side, the countries that have invested in modernizing customs administration, the type that they act in 2023 seeks to do, and we have examples like Morocco, like South Korea, like Singapore, like France, like Germany, they all have very, very positive results. And this result is comparable to what we have seen in Nigeria over the last two years or thereabout. I am proud to say before this August assembly that I am a proud product of the Nigeria Customs Service Act 2023. The act provided for modernization of customs administration and the president, the new President Bolaabe Tinubu, has been targeted and determined to pursue this modernization in the last two years, and we have started to get results of this determination. In terms of revenue, our revenue has increased by ninety percent and it has been on the upward trajectory. The new act provides for the creation of a new business environment, the type that this Nigerian tax bill is trying to advocate. And we have already started seeing results just about two years, less than two years, after the promulgation of the act. Customs emerged as the most improved agency in the ease of doing business in the PEBEC index ranking. So what we are trying to say, the paper captures a number of other ones. The tools, international tools that support trade, authorize economic operator program, the use of advanced ruling, this has all been done within two years of the implementation of this act. We therefore feel that two years into the implementation of an act is a little bit too small for us to condemn it and repeal it as this act is saying. I just want to imagine us, if this is done, maybe in two years, as I'm rounding up, sir. Yes, sir. If we all call back again for us to look at attempts to amend this revenue tax bill, it would be a waste of time. So we have a number of recommendations which we have submitted. We recommended institutional autonomy, we recommended legal clarity, we rendered specialized functions, we recommended international obligations and customs-specific dispute resolution. And we said that if these reforms were to be sustained and all the objectives to be realized, we recommended a first implementation approach. We ended up with two simple prayers. Number one, that customs should be allowed to retain its mandate under the provisions of the NCS Act 2023. And number two, the final versions of these bills do not contravene the NCS Act 2023, thereby preserving the core statutory functions and operational efficiency of the NCS. I thank you for your audience. Mr. Chairman, distinguished chairman and distinguished committee members. Mr. Chairman, my name is Professor Kemi Pihero. I'm a senior advocate of Nigeria. I've been a lawyer for thirty-nine years and a senior advocate for almost twenty years. If Mr. Chairman gives me additional time, I will do your next election petition with a major discount. Pro bono, pro bono, that is. Mr. Chair, wise... Yes, sir. Wise and noble committee members and excellencies, I represent the... Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, sir. I represent the Nigerian Economic Zones, which made up of at least fifty free trade zones all over Nigeria. Our position is anchored on solely specific provisions of the tax reform bill. And it's important that, to appreciate our point, may I respectfully invite Mr. Chairman and committee members to the provisions of the Constitution, which is the guiding Bible and Quran for all Nigerians. Section sixteen, one and two is very relevant. It provides that the state shall direct its policy towards assuring promotion of a planned and balanced economic development. Having said that, your legislative powers is not in doubt. You are the first creation of the Constitution. Secondly, you must also concede, most respectfully, that the judiciary interprets your law. And where you air, the judiciary reserves the powers to expunge and null and strike down any provision of your law. So it's this background that I want to assist this very wise and noble committee in the discharge of its honorable task. The first point I want to make, distinguished committee members and Mr. Chairman, is that the current position that affects net today is as anchored in sections eight and eighteen of the Free Zone Law. Section eight and eighteen, it creates tax exemption and tax incentive. Because of these two very important sections, because of these two very important sections, agreements have been reached and agreements have been signed by investors with Nigerian entities. Not only that, bilateral treaties, multinational bilateral treaties have infused these incentives and these tax holidays into their treaties, and Nigeria is signatory to all these treaties. As it is, those bilateral agreements also have what is called arbitration clauses. The implication of this is that, as it stands today, the law is that Nigeria is committed to those tax obligations, those non-tax and non-incentive obligations. If you remove those provisions, only God can stop litigations that will arise. Let's draw your attention to these offending provisions. The first offending provision, yes, sir? The lawyers will profit, we will profit by the litigation. So we will thank you in advance for creating a venue for us to make money. But on a more serious note, Mr. Chairman and wise and noble members of this committee, the offending paragraphs that Nezah finds very worrisome are sections one ninety-eight, two, and three of the tax reform bill, together with section fifty-seven. Additionally, under the second schedule, clauses two-three, two-four, and two-five are the main provisions that we find offensive. What is worrisome about these provisions is that, by virtue of section one ninety-eight, the benefits that accrue under the Nezah section eight and section eighteen have been amended and repealed. The implication is that those non-tax avenues that were available to the investors have been completely removed by this proposed amendment. What that means, in essence, is that those incentives will no longer be available. Mr. Chairman, sir, it is also important to note that this section one ninety-eight does not have any transitional period. Even the Constitution, nineteen ninety-nine, that we operate, has a transitional period in section three-one-five and three-seventeen. The KAMA, this committee, this August assembly also passed, has a transitional period. Why would the tax reform bill not have a transitional period? Why completely abrogate those benefits that had accrued under an existing... What are the implications? And I will give examples. A similar thing that has arisen in Ghana. The equivalent of FIRS in Ghana is the government revenue agency. Four cases went to litigation on it. Similar provisions. The Ghana, the government revenue agency, equivalent of FIRS, lost woefully because the courts in Ghana felt that you cannot withdraw benefits that had accrued by subsequent legislation. And this is not too far-fetched. Under Nigerian law, our courts have always viewed that any law that has the effect of a retrospective application will be struck down. Any law that has the effect of a retrospective application will be shut down. And it happened recently in 2022, in the case involving a Nigerian company, Akugas versus the FIRS, over provisions of CETA. The courts, even though the court upheld that your August assembly can amend, you can repeal, you can abrogate, but those rights and benefits that have accrued, in the application of the abrogation of those sections, you cannot take away those rights. So what is the effect? This, the way the tax reform bill stands, you would have amended and removed those tax incentives, but the benefits will still accrue. And so there will be really no effect, particularly when there's no transition period. What was still, we will have a repetition of PID cases, Shenzhen versus Okustate Government Arbitration Awards. And so I would respectfully plead with distinguished committee to view these points and may God and Almighty Allah give wisdom in adding the country rights. The tax reform bill is very salutary, it's very commendable, but I must say with respect, sir, that you cannot take what another law has given. And that is the implication of section one ninety-eight, two, and three. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Professor, for this insightful presentation. You referred on technicalities and law. And the committee will have also technical lessons in all the vast fields, law, economics, taxation, everything, we will do justice to what we have presented and we will be just as this time. I will want to preach our... My earlier call that we're going to call this on water, before I break second, I want to just give an opportunity to part of the favors of this booth. Five minutes to speak and then go back in on this thing to honor the American contribution. So with this, I want to call the General Counsel, Mr. Ayers.
Chairman of the committee, my distinguished papa senator, and all the distinguished senators, my colleagues here present, thank you for just amend the program because we call it public hearing and then there is need for intervention, most especially when you see that the real fundamental name is called... Most especially, and I will take it from my Leonard uncle that just left here, most especially... No, no, not respond. No, I just want to give certain clarifications, sir. I've not responded to... Yes. So the reason why the clarification is very important, sir, is that we have media here, we have people that have read, it's always good that they have that balanced position. Because when they speak about free trade zone and what law is saying, nobody is repealing free trade zone acts. It is never proposed in the bill. And if you all listened to Senator President yesterday, he gave one caveat that people should read the bill before they comment. The essence of free trade zone is to develop economic zone that is purely for exports. That is the essence. And why is it that we say there should not be tax? Most especially local tax when you are in free trade zone? Is because all what you produce are taken out of the country to make you competitive. So don't apply any local taxes on all these things. So when you produce, you can compete with China, with America, because you produce and we don't have any. But our law also permits that sometimes you may have crisis in custom area. You are allowed to sell up to twenty-five percent of what you produce to Nigeria without paying taxes. The new tax law, because we discover all of them, and I just don't want to be confrontational as advised by the chairman, they are only free trade zone by name. They produce and sell everything Nigeria. And I give you the typical example. If you are rice producer, custom area, you pay all taxes. The cost of production is ten naira. And the same rice producer in free trade zone, my own cost is five naira. I don't pay any taxes. Why? Because I want to export my rice to Ghana. But I now decide to export all my rice to Nigeria to come and compete with someone that is paying taxes with ten naira cost of production. You can come to custom area and sell at seven naira, you will still make profit of two naira. The person that will pay tax will not be able to compete with you at the cost of ten naira. They are making losses. So they are causing economic distortion. And that is when you have a responsible government, and which is what we are saying. If you have a responsible government, we will not sit there and talk about import, we want to reach foreign trade. And this is one thing we should believe, which is one of the mistakes of the tax reform bill that we are putting together. Nobody will come from anywhere to come and develop Nigeria. We need to have economic policy that encourage local development. So I will never put law in the place hoping that someone is coming from anywhere to come and develop. So if I now have a free trade zone that you are only by name free trade zone. So what that provided for in the law is that anything you sell above that twenty-five percent will give you allowance for, you will have to pay tax because you sold it into Nigeria so that you can effectively compete with those people that have invested in Nigeria. What agreement have you signed? That you will come, that you sign treaty to do export and you are import. Have you not violated the law that is put you there? So which arbitration, which... So, no, 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 no. The reason why we have to clarify, sir, 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 excuse me, sir. No, no, we need to clarify, sir. So the reason why we have to clarify, sir, with your permission, Mr. Chairman? Okay. No, no, sir. So the one one? Yes, sir.
We are all here and we have been doing the same very well. You committed what we are doing today.
Yes.
Your whole identity will be to share lives.
Yes.
And you are anything that you want, because we are not here to debate anything. We are here to collect. You know, whatever anybody will say, even if they say, oh, all the bills are not good, we will take it. If we say all the bills are very good, we will take it. But we are going back as legislators, we have our legislative conscience and we will do what is right, everything that can be better. So with this, I'll give you one minute to conclude.
Okay. The next one minute to give me, my chairman, actually is not to say anything other than to say thank you, thank you, and thank you.
My name is Awolu Hamisuyadudi. I'm a retired professor of law and would want to highlight a few things about the bills that I hope the committee would pay attention to. Now I have noticed that in the bills, somehow the military has found a way of expressing themselves in those bills. The bills contain oust our clauses. Whenever the bill speaks of not standing anything in another law, in a way, if you pass this law with that language, you are creating an oust our clause and making whatever provision in other laws of no consequence. This has serious constitutional implication. It has serious legal and also drafting implication. Specifically, I refer to section seven, two, eight, two... So in a way, the, those sections contain what I consider as oust our clauses of the military... Seven sub-two, twenty sub-two, thirty-five sub-two, section forty-one. This is for the... Now, the second thing that I also I wish to observe about the acts or the bills is that I think we are a federation and I have noticed that there are sections in the bills that seem to undermine our federal outlook. I know Mr. Ozeokome would agree with me, or maybe take up an issue. In particular, I'm referring to the composition of the governing board. This is a board that has the chairman, ex-official members, a whole host of ex-official members, and only six representatives of geopolitical zones. Now, either you want to create a federal revenue service agency, in which case you're entitled to have those area of ex-officials and exclude others. But if you want to make it truly federal, I am recommending that this section should contain a representative each of the states of the federation, the FCC. That is, as I say, if you are continuing to maintain it as a national revenue board. Otherwise, change its name to federal revenue board and therefore have your composition the way you have proposed. The third observation I have, of course, there I, I will refer you to, I think, section one, subsection one and three of, I think, section seven, seven, the National Revenue Service Act or Bill. Now, the third point I'm making, Mr. Chairman, is that even like at section eighty-two, ninety-four, there are management services boards are being established for states. Now, this really runs counter to our federal system. But why would you create an act that establishes and gives composition for state revenue management board, a local government revenue management board? This is contrary, in my view, to our federal system. So if you want to have that, and if you want to maintain what you have proposed, then you may have to give the states the power by their State House of Assembly to establish such agencies, but not established by a federal act. I doubt if there is a constitutional basis that the federal legislature can claim and base. Fourthly, Mr. Chairman, I find it worrisome that the bills do not only contain oust our clauses, but in section one forty-one, you are given this bill, when it becomes an act, a supremacy status to override all other laws and that they will be null and void to the extent of their inconsistency. Only the Constitution, which is the grand norm of our laws, enjoys such opposition. Clearly, this, I think, I find it problematic, the language of being supreme. And finally, Mr. Chairman, I was not here yesterday, but I know that there has been this raging discussion about inherent tax, which was mentioned today twice. I know they say if it swims like a duck, behaves like a duck, it looks like a duck, it probably is a duck. The provision we refer to as inherent tax is not acceptable. And if you must have it, fortunately, the bills envisage that it is the states where the person is resident which will enjoy. So if that is the intention, first of all, I think it is unnecessary. But in the alternative, if you want it, then make it like you have the provision in the, in the Constitution, section two-five, two-seven-five, regarding the assembly of Sharia court. It says for each, any state which desires it, they can establish those... It says for each, any state which desires it, they can establish. Make it uh, uh, optional for any state which requires it, but just don't impose it on everybody, assuming it is what you say it is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for, for this opportunity.
Thank you. The Chairman of the Senate Committee on Finance and distinguished members of the committee. I am Chairman Ajai Kadri, MNI, the Director General of the Manufacturers Association of Nigeria. We would like to commend the federal government for its unprecedented consultative approach in this tax reform process as well as this honorable committee. For want of time, Mr. Chairman, I'll just go straight to how we feel about some sections of the bills. Man applauds the government for incorporating provisions that are pro-growth and production-centric in the bills. Manufacturers are confident that the reforms espoused in the bills under consideration will adequately curb the high incidences of multiple and excessive taxation, the prevalence of arbitrary levies and fees by regulatory agencies of government at different levels and untwisting stance of non-state actors using unorthodox means to collect illegal taxes, fees and levies. These issues are partly responsible for the climate economic environment in which my members operate today. Clearly, these bills, when passed into law, will also facilitate huge improvements in tax intelligence, technology deployment and swift streamlining of the over sixty different taxes payable by manufacturers to single digits. This will be a glorious day for manufacturers in Nigeria if it happens and it should happen. The reduction in CIT rate from the current thirty percent to twenty-seven point five percent in twenty-twenty-five and to twenty-five percent in twenty-twenty-six is laudable and we fully support his passage. The general trend all over the world is the downward review of tax on company incomes and this will come as a huge relief to the beleaguered manufacturing industries and other businesses in Nigeria. It will endear will be investors and signpost the government's commitment to easing the cost of doing business in the country. The provisions of the tax bill on free trade zone should be upheld as it offers clarity and aligns with the intent and letters of the enabling laws. We believe that it does not in any way jeopardize the incentives offered to the operators within the zone. Rather, it will ensure equitable tax treatment for companies operating in the customs territory and those licensed to operate within the free zones with respect to sales into the customs territory. Thereby enabling fair competition while protecting the country's tax base. This is in line with global practices for free zones. In fact, Nigeria will continue to be more generous even after the proposed amendment. An example that is not far-fetched is the situation in nearby Ghana. Ghana allow, only allows up to thirty percent of the sales into the customs territory, subject to payment of duties and taxes, including CIT, whereas we allow one hundred percent sales. Export by the zone's entity are tax-free only for ten years, after which up to eight percent CIT will apply. Nigeria offers indefinite tax exemptions on exports. Those who fear litigation and unpleasant consequences for Nigeria may want to add the Trump two point zero on how to defend national interest. Man fully supports the removal of the certificate of acceptance for fixed assets cover from requirement for capital allowance. To this end, it should not be included in the bill as a requirement. We have persistently conversed that of the inappropriateness of this requirement as it is an unwarranted burden on businesses and an unnecessary duplication of what the FRS is required to do as part of his routine audit. Not to mention that we support the creation of the Office of Tax Enboot and introduction of joint tax audit. We also support PIT reliefs and increase in CIT threshold from the twenty-five million to fifty million. Now we have our concerns. Regrettably, the bill excluded tax waivers on profit from manufactured exports. Between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-three, the value of manufactured exports deteriorated from six point seven billion dollars to one point six billion, partly due to the inadequate incentives for our exporters. I believe this is in the, this is the right time to give manufacturers the much-needed support to significantly boost non-oil export earnings. We therefore advocate that manufactured exports be fully restored and enhanced. Mr. Chairman, sir, distinguished senators, ladies and gentlemen, permit me to reiterate our wavering support for the government's effort in creating a conducive business environment in Nigeria. No doubt, the tax reform bills have a lot of positive provisions that will revolutionize our tax system for the good of the country. However, we urge the Senate to consider a few areas where we have strong reservations. Further improvements in the highlighted areas of concern will undoubtedly help us conclude a tax reform framework that prepares Nigeria's industrial engine to unprecedented heights. Together, let us forge a brighter future for our nation, a future built on the pillars of competitiveness, innovation and growth. We equally urge, Mr. Chairman, distinguished senators, to the proposed reform as a holistic package. This is to guide against fundamental changes in some areas that may undermine the impact of the reform. For instance, the supremacy clause, which is meant to put a check on the proliferation of endless taxes, should be sustained and, if necessary, rephrased in a manner that it does not offend the constitution rather than outright deletion. The deletion of the clause may actually jeopardize the entire reform exercise and herald an atmosphere of an incoherent tax regime. Mr. Chairman, distinguished senators, I thank you for listening. God bless you and God bless the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Thank you very much, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. As the chairman, we already have established a very welcome expectations for everybody, so I want to just stand on that. And make, okay, my name is Dr. Billy Sotubogilis Harry. I am the National President of the Petroleum Products Retail Outlet Owners Association of Nigeria, Shop Form Petron. Mr. Chairman, I know that we have three minutes and in our business we try to be very brief, so please don't mind my brevity. We already have submitted just few observations in the bill and so I would just like to take them very simply in the next three minutes and be done with the business. Um, petroleum product retail outlet owners, as we know, you see our stations, they are very glizzy. They are very attractive and that has confused uh, the tax leadership to think that we are making so much money. So uh, they come up with a lot of taxes. So when this bill came, we became very interested and we tried to peruse through it and there are quite a number of provisions that we agree with and we believe that this committee will do justice to this bill and ensure that Nigeria becomes a better place. So let me just uh do an overview. One, uh, we observe that section five, eight, three, uh, which gives provision for the Joint Revenue Board is, is now going to be, uh, is now going to be taking the, the place of almost all the other tax bodies that have been existing. Petron agrees to this. So that we don't deal with so many organizations. Um, number two, the Nigerian Revenue Services Establishment uh subsection five, eight, four uh will replace the federal in-line revenue services of two thousand and seven in the areas of the administration of revenue matters in the whole of the country. Petron also agrees with this provision. Number three, Nigerian Tax Administration two thousand and twenty-four subsection, SB five, eight, five. Uh, this bill, if passed into this, into act, will provide for the assessment, collection of and accounting of all revenue accruing to the federation, the federals, the federating states and all the local governments. This, Petron also agrees with it. Number four, we agree with the provisions of the Nigerian Tax Bill, five, eight, six. Uh, we did a minor calculation when the, when our presentation is given to the, to the committee. I believe you see that. But there are few things that we just want to point out here. Petron, as an organization, warehouses almost seven thousand retail outlets in this country. And what we have observed in the previous years is that we simply get tax, estimated taxes slapped on us. And I'm happy that the chairman of FRS here because we, we will still see him and let him know that uh, um, the stations you see that are having twenty-six pumps don't make that kind of profit. We are just only having quite a lot of turnover, that very minimal marginal benefits and is very, very fact-checkable. So we just, not enough to waste so much time here. We want to recommend to the committee and the entire tax issues of this, this reform that please do not apply a thirty percent uh total um revenue rate for retail outlet owners. The reason is simple. Most of our companies are registered under the Company and Allied Karma in laws. So when you apply that thirty percent to us, we will, very soon you will not see retail outlets that is going to sell you petrol. And we all know that petrol is a major energy to move our economy. So we want to recommend that you should please apply only ten percent and still with, with it down as we keep going. So this is just what we want to do. Other than that, we support the whole content of this attempt to make Nigeria great again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the prayer, our prayer here says, it says, uh, we need you, okay, so let me read it, sir. All of these provisions in section four of our presentation, Petron agrees to them except one. The current company rate of thirty percent are believed to be on the high side by our members as far as Petron's membership is concerned and therefore we are proposing a ten percent um application for those taxes. Hence, that's the, that's the last part of us. Hence, it is suggested that the tax should be reduced to ten percent on company net profits. And finally, our full prayer is on the last page. It says, it will be recommended that companies that incur losses during a tax period should should, should not be taxed. If such tax will be taking place at all, it should be one percent of the gross profit. So this is what the petroleum. Thank you so much. So other than that, I want to thank the Senate for this wonderful work and also the committee. I'm thanked by the president for making this bill to work. Thank you so much and God bless us.
Good afternoon, the chairman and other committee members. My name is Angulo Musoi-Brain, the president, Association of Nigerian Taxation Students. Uh, with me here is the executive way of our contribution. Association of Nigerian Taxation Student is a community of students from various associations and tax clubs within uh the country. And with me here are students, young tax professionals that are studying taxation with National State University, Kefi. ANTAS is, was established in the year twenty twenty-two and ANTAS aim to promote tax knowledge, advocacy and compliance within and beyond the student community. This memorandum present our contribution to the public hearing on the path from specifically, one, Nigerian Tax Administration Bill, the Nigerian Revenue Service Establishment Bill, the Joint Revenue Board of Nigeria Establishment Bill and then Nigerian Tax Bill, highlighting key issues and recommendations. Reembles, the Association of Nigerian Taxation Student is committed to holding the highest standard of professionalism and integrity in the profession, in the tax profession. As future tax professionals, we recognize, okay, okay, we recognize the importance of taxation as a specialized field that requires expertise and professionalism. Uh, the issues and recommendations here, one, appointment of tax agent. As student of taxation, we recognize that taxation is a specialized profession that requires expertise. that requires expertise and professionalism. The National University Commission and the Nigerian Board of Technical Education have approved the study of taxation as a course in the Nigerian universities, over 30 tertiary institutions. Which at the national diploma level, higher national diploma level, bachelor's degree, and even at the PhD level. Section 32 of the Nigerian Tax Administration Bill 2024 provides for the accreditation of tax agent. Specifically, it states that, one, for the purpose of compliance with the Act or any other law, a taxpayer may either represent itself or be represented by a tax agent accredited by a tax authority. Second, the requirement for accreditation shall be set out by the relevant tax authority. And third, no return shall be deemed duly filed except by the taxpayer or an accredited agent. And then fourth, the tax return shall be accompanied by a declaration or attestation that the information supplied are correct. However, the definition of tax agent in section 143 of the same bill raises concerns where it states as follow. Tax agent means any person knowledge and duly certified by professional body in Nigeria to represent a taxable person. Tax authority means the Nigerian Revenue Service or the Revenue Authority of a state or the Federal Capital Territory in Nigeria. The current definition allow any professional body in Nigeria to certify individuals as tax agents, potentially undermining the professionalism of taxation. We strongly recommend that that definition of tax agent be amended to required certification by a tax professional body in Nigeria, such as the Chartered Institute of Taxation of Nigeria, CITN. This will ensure that only qualified and competent individual are appointed a tax agent and that taxation is treated with professionalism and expertise it deserves. Secondly, dual authority for appointment of tax agent. Section 32 of Nigerian Tax Administration Bill 2024 and section 5N of the Joint Revenue Board of Nigerian Establishment Bill 2024 create a dual opportunity, dual authority for the appointment of tax agent. This may lead to policy inconsistency and conflicting appointment powers. We recommend that the Joint Tax Board provide uniform guidelines for the appointment of tax agent in Nigeria to avoid confusion and to ensure consistency. The third in here is development levy. Section 59 of the Nigerian Tax Administration Bill 1756 propose a single development levy consolidating three direct annual deductions on companies' profits. The development levy will progressively decline from 4% in 2025, 2026 to 2% from 2030. We do not see how development levy can adequately cater for the tertiary institutions as it is being done with third fund. The Tertiary Education Tax Fund has been instrumental in providing funding for tertiary institutions in Nigeria. We note that the proposed removal of the Tertiary Education Tax Fund may negatively impact Nigerian education. We recommend that alternative funding sources for education be explored and that the Tertiary Education Tax Fund be maintained and modifications to ensure its effectiveness. We, the Association of Nigerian Taxation Students, conclude as future tax professionals, we are committed to upholding the highest standard of professionalism and integrity in the tax profession. We believe that the provision of the tax reform bill must align with principle of good tax governance, fairness, and transparency. We urge the National Assembly to consider our recommendations and ensure that the tax reform bill promote a tax system that is efficient, effective, and fair. We look forward to our future aware taxation. It's a respected and trusted profession. We are committed to play our own part in achieving this goal. Thank you very much for the audience.
Mr. Chairman, sir, my name is Kamri Obonin Ogeridadi, the Central Oken Committee Member of the Petroleum and National Gasiness Association of Nigeria. I'm here to make a presentation on the position of the association as regards the tax reform bill. We have applied about eight items for discussions where we also recommended certain amendments to the proposed tax bill. I'll take these columns one after the others, sir. First is on the harmonization of the fiscal provisions. Amendment to section 65, application of this act has to do with the hydrocarbon tax. Current warnings on that states that this part applies to the taxation of profit derived from petroleum operations. Proposed amendment. This part applies to the taxation of profits derived from the petroleum operations, ensuring consistency with the fiscal terms applied in the Petroleum Industry Act 2021. Any reference to hydrocarbon taxation is repealed. Section of EPIA shall be incorporated into this act to maintain fiscal stability and upstream petroleum operations. Our justification. Align the tax framework with the fiscal provisions of the Petroleum Industry Act 2021. Prevent misalignment in tax administration, ensuring clear application of hydrocarbon taxation. Ensure stability in tax obligations for upstream petroleum operation, providing clarity for industry stakeholders. The second item is de-gradification of restraining rights and revocation of licenses. Section 123 subsection 3 of the Tax Administration Bill, the proposed wording of the section 123 subsection 3. Notwithstanding the provision of section 1 and section 2 of this section, the service may notify the commission or authority to distrain the license or licenses of its oil well, crude oil, condensates, natural gas, or natural gas liquids, petroleum product engines, machinery tools, implements, or other effects, or cancel, revoke, seize, distrain, or dispose of the licenses or rights of the holder. Justification. Establish clear rules for the NROs and the commission, reducing regulatory duplications and conflicts. Ensure streamlined integration of tax collaboration and regulatory oversight without disrupting upstream activities. Ensure compliance and cooperation between tax and regulatory authorities. Number three, integration of petroleum physical terms. Amendment to section 67 as amendment of the crude oil revenue, adjusted profits, and assessable profits. Current warnings. The assessment of adjusted profits and assessable profits shall be determined as prescribed by this act. Proposed amendment. The assessment of adjusted profits and assessable profits shall be determined as prescribed by this act, incorporating relevant provisions from the repealed 5th and 6th schedule of the Petroleum Industry Act 2021 to ensure continuity in capital allowance and production allowance for upstream operation. Our justification are preserve physical incentives for upstream investors by monitoring capital allowance and production allowances. Avoid disruption in revenue assessment by ensuring continuity in physical competitions. Encourage investment by providing task clarity for all stream operators. Number four, ensure regulatory certainty. Addition to section 70, assessable profits and losses. Proposed amendment as section 70 subsection 5. Existing petroleum contracts, including production sharing contracts, cost recovery alignment, and tax incentives previously governed under the Petroleum Industry Act 2021 shall remain valid under this act. The transactionary framework shall be established between the NROs and the commission to ensure smooth enforcement. Justification. To prevent investors' uncertainty by safeguarding the validity of existing petroleum contract, ensure a smooth transition in physical administration without disrupted contractual agreement, reduce legal and financial risk associated with tax law charges in the petroleum sector. Number five, streamlining tax collection and reporting. A new section is hereby introduced under section 8A called digital tax filling for petroleum operation. Proposed new addition. A unified digital tax filling and reporting system shall be established to ensure real-time tax assessment and collection for all stream production operation. The NROs and the commission should only manage the system to prevent duplication and enhance compliance. Our justification. Improve efficiency in tax administration through digital automation. Reduce reporting burden on petroleum operators by eliminating duplicated filings. Enhance transparency and compliance monitoring through real-time assessment and ensure easy exchange of data required from petroleum operations to compute tax and other levies. Our number six observations has to do with avoiding conflict in upstream physical regimes. Proposed addition to section 88 of the Petroleum Realty. Proposed new addition to section 88 subsection 3. Reality rates, cost recovery mechanism, and production sharing principles for upstream operation shall remain consistent with globally competitive standard to ensure a stable investment climate. Our justification. Prevent misalignment between the tax policy and upstream investment incentives. Protect Nigeria's competitiveness as a petroleum investment destination. Ensure physical policies do not deter exploration and production activity. Number seven on our proposed amendment is ensuring stable funding for the commission and consequential amendment. Section 198, consequential amendment, funding mechanism for NEPRUC. Yes, sir. Repel section 6 of the section 82 which is subject to extant rules and regulation. The commission shall retain not less than 4% as the cost of operation of the total oil and gas revenue generated by the commission, including royalty, signature bonuses, other fees, which the National Assembly may appropriate from the capital and recurrent expenditure of the commission. Alternatively, we also propose in that a relative fee of $1 per crude oil or condensate production ascertain per barrel, which shall be collected from the leases. Justification, provide a stable legal back funding framework for the commission. Shifting the focus from cost of revenue collection to cost of revenue generation and operation. Ensure financial independence of the upstream regulatory agency, reducing reliance on government allocation. Link the commission funding to upstream activities, incentivizing efficient oversight and production optimization. And finally, one of our recommendations is the collaboration between the commission and the tax authority. New addition, section 65 subsection 7, corporate and cooperation between the NROs and NEPRUC. Proposed, the NROs and the commission shall establish formal framework for cooperation. This shall, this include data shared mechanism, joint audits, coordinated enforcement actions, and regulatory interagency meeting to align regulatory oversight with tax administration in the upstream petroleum sector. The justification for this to prevent regulatory conflict and administrative inefficiency, strengthening the compliance enforcement through joint audits and coordinated actions, ensure stimulus tax administration while maintaining regulatory oversight. Mr. Chairman, sir, in summary, we have outlined a table containing all the proposed amendments and the reference bill for your reference. In conclusion, sir, we believe that the amendment to Nigerian Tax Bill presented above will ensure that tax administration reform do not undermine the upstream petroleum product by clarifying responsibility to preventive physical incentives and establishment. Thank you, sir.